Good evening and welcome to the City Commission meeting. Today is Wednesday, March 19th, 2025, and I'd like to call the meeting to order, please.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Scott Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Adam Marle?
Here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Present. So would you please stand and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So thank you, everyone. We're starting just a little bit late this evening because we had a longer Urban Renewal Commission meeting than we normally do. Normally it's one hour, but we allowed for some extra time for a discussion topic. And again, on behalf of the Commission, even though it's already been said, those of you that are watching from home that were here earlier, thank you very much for everyone who came. The comments were noted. I took, as I like to say, copious notes, and I will keep that in mind when we are having further discussions. I also want to thank folks for, as Chair Mitchell said, people were courteous to each other and polite. They were courteous to us, and I appreciate that as well. So we have no ceremonies or proclamations tonight, but we will have a bunch of them for the next meeting. And so I'm going to go to item number four, which is public comments. And these are again for the record, these are for items that are currently not on this current agenda. So if you have something that is not currently on the agenda, I'll call up Betty and Jim at the same time. And Betty, I would be delighted if you would like to go first, please.
Good evening, Betty, from Oregon City. I don't have a dog in the fight, but I wanted to make sure citizens were aware. TriMet is looking to eliminate or reduce the rides on Linda Avenue. So with the climate-friendly challenge going on in the state wanting everybody out of their cars and in public transit, we should all be concerned about TriMet and what they plan to do. And hopefully, one of you will pick up the challenge and look into it. That's it.
I do that, and I contacted TriMet last night, the staff person that we've been working with. And as of today, he said that he would go back and talk to the planning staff, but he is not aware of any changes to that particular line. But again, I'm expecting a reply no later than tomorrow, and I will contact you personally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor McGriff and City Commissioners Gymnasi to Oregon City. So I've generated a lot of heat over the past couple of months, and I thought it was incumbent upon me to come immediately. And thank you all personally for the vote that you took as Urban Renewal Commissioners earlier tonight. And I will convey my thanks to former Mayor Neely and Commissioner Ari Anello as well by email tonight. So I did want to, after that meeting, offer some optimism for you regarding moving forward. We had, I think, six of those discussion sessions on Section 59 in February and March leading up to this. And I'm happy to say that people got it. Citizens understood it. They understood when the history of urban renewal in Oregon City was explained to them, when the statute was explained to them, and a lot of the complexities was explained to them, they got it. Commissioner Marle, I do have some what might be bad news for you. There are a lot of these citizens that understand the preemption issue regarding Section 59 better than you do. But the past couple of weeks have taught me a lot, and one of them is to... Oh, I get the apathy. I understand, obviously, from my own political experience in Oregon City, the apathy problem in Oregon City, and it's kind of like the bane of our collective existence. And one of the things the past couple of weeks has taught me is that we're not going to stop organizing. And as we organizing, start organizing on probably more than one issue, I hope that we will be one of the sources of leadership that you were mentioning earlier tonight. As Commissioner Mitchell knows, that I attended the session that Seth Henderson had held on the courthouse. You know, I'm a historic preservationist, going back 45 years. And my interest in the courthouse, as most of you know, is genuine. My interest in historic preservation is genuine. And I think I will very much look forward, if, I mean, if the courthouse is something you decide to proceed with, we will make sure that the cooperation and participation happen. So thank you all again.
Thank you. And obviously, you and I agree on that point. As a preservationist myself, I believe in adaptive reuse, and that's something I'm very interested in pursuing. We don't have any presentations tonight. We do have Items 6 and 7, which is the adoption of the agenda. We have Items A through E. Is there any concern about any of these items? Or may I ask for a motion?
I'd like to pull Item D, just to ask a question.
All right, go right ahead. Oh, ask the question.
Okay.
And we won't pull it. We'll just ask the question.
So this is for Mr. Conkall, Mr. Kabizman. With the, does the letter we received from ODOT make us need to revisit that IGA?
I don't believe so. I think we're working in good faith between the county, the city, and Oregon Department of Transportation to try to find a fix for Redland in 213. ODOT, it's unfortunate that ODOT's determined that the triple lefts are not an option there. Essentially, we're back to, some of you may remember, we did the Jug Handle. Originally, that was to include an additional northbound and southbound lane on 213 up to the Holcomb Bridge, and pushing the right turn lane onto Redland, that would push that closer to the Home Depot, for lack of a better term. So the problem with that intersection is that there are very limited number of options to make improvements. So, you know, thank Clackamas County for coming up with the proposal of the triple lefts, which was proportional to their impact from a cost standpoint. So I think we're back to the drawing board with ODOT, and the fallback being the full, the full Phase 2 Jug Handle improvement through that intersection. And, you know, we are thankful, we are, we did see Representative Hartman's presentation, that is one of the three projects that she's identified as a priority project. So we'll just hopefully continue with cooperation with the county and working with ODOT in our state legislature to try to find adequate funding. It's a, the hard, the hard part, too, is, you know, you can't really do those improvements in sections. It's kind of an all or nothing intersection improvement once you start shifting lanes and making movements there. But we're comfortable with the IGA as it is today.
Okay. Thank you. Then I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marle?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I do want to just say for the record that our work with the county has been much appreciated. We're doing everything that we can to get them into their building. However, we are working with the conditions of approval based on the traffic analysis that was submitted by their consultant. So we are, again, doing everything we can to facilitate that particular issue. The one concern I have about ODOT is that, I guess, being the...
One?
Yeah. Well, it's only one right now. Only, only the one today, under the item. I only have the one. So we can, we can get on, I can get on my soapbox about the other stuff later. But I, I guess I want to say, I don't want to say never say never, and I think that it would behoove them, and of course, they're not watching. I wanted to try to send an email to the person that wrote that letter saying, "Well, thanks for your lovely suggestion. However, you didn't come up with a solution." I still think that the proposal we put forth is reasonable, and I think that just because they say, "Oh, well, we haven't ever done that before, and we don't do that," that doesn't mean that it's not a viable option. So I'm willing to be considerably persuasive in the fact that maybe there are other options that they have not considered. All right. So we don't have any public hearings tonight. Item number nine is revision to the Adaptive Reuse Building Rehabilitation Program 2.0. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Commissioners James Graham, Economic Development Manager of Oregon City. As you recall, during the February 5th meeting, you approved the Adaptive Reuse Building Rehabilitation Program 2.0, and you agreed to take $150,000 from the general fund. After my discuss, and we advertised it, I think, really, the next day.
It was.
And so we got the word out. But we also got feedback from people who are most likely to apply, including DOCA. And people felt that the 15% of, of the, of the project size, for instance, if it was, if it was a $300,000 project, and 15%, we could only fund up to 15% of the project, of eligible project cost. In this example, it would be something like $45,000. And they thought that that was too small for what they would have to go through to get the money. So what we're recommending, and it's only one thing, everything else can stay in place, but it's only one item, and that is to increase the percentage of award from 15% to 50%, so that it's more, it's much more palatable to apply to the program. And that's the only request.
So, Mr. Graham, you might want to amend that. So it wasn't, the comments came through the Downtown Oregon City Association, but these were from actual prospective applicants. And several of them reached out to me as well, which is why then I reached back out to you and city managers, saying, "This is what we're hearing on the street from people who might be interested in applying for this." And so the other comments then were filtered back through Downtown Oregon City Association.
Well, I got it both ways.
Yeah, you had it both ways. I did, too. I had it both ways.
I got it in stereo. So that was the request.
Comments?
I had also gotten that feedback from DOCA, that the request was, "Hey, can we look at a higher percentage?" So, you know, I appreciate you looking at it. And just to make sure I'm abundantly clear, the request is not any additional funds, it's just increasing the percent that we would be willing to fund.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the change from 15 to 50%.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Let's have the roll call.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mike, Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marle?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
It was unanimous. All right. So we have communication.
Can I just say one?
Absolutely.
One thing on this?
Please. You may say two things, three things, four things.
One.
Oh, Rocky said one, sorry. Rocky vetoed that.
I'll try not to ramble again. This is a very short timeframe. I hope that we come up with some sort of a similar program in our upcoming budget discussion. But I think this is a great idea to jumpstart this and prove that something can work. But I think we may need to have a discussion on that 50%, should this come back at budget time, and the, and the cost implication over a full two-year biennium if we try to fund projects at 50%. I like the idea, but it wouldn't be a small ask, so.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with you. I think, as, as was stated by Commissioner Mi, Commissioner Marle, that we need to have further discussion about this. I will be happy if we get one applicant. And I think we may get, we will get one. And that's okay. We're trying, it's an experiment. We're trying this. We know that there's a need. I know some of the requests that came through DOCA, looking at the matching grant from the state, were well beyond what, you know, we're talking replacing people's sewer lines, somebody's roof collapsed, and, you know, some of that is a little lack of, of, of furred maintenance by the owner, but, you know, I'm not going to go there. So I know, I know that there are projects out there that, that could benefit from this, but because of the severity of it and the timing, they're, they're not going to be able to apply. Go ahead.
Thank you. If we do only get one applicant, I will just stress that that does not mean that we need to accept that. So I'll just say that.
He's, he's going to be looking at it with, through a lens.
Well, and we get to look at it through our lens, too.
Exactly.
And there's a, and there's a committee.
Right.
Right?
It's a long committee.
Okay. All right. Communications.
I have no updates tonight, thank you.
Yeah. So are we confirmed for the work session? I know Nancy was here making sure we got the bond pass, but, I mean, the item under number C, no, under D, sorry.
Yes, Jacob, my understanding is that they have confirmed for April 8th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Other than that, we have our first budget meetings coming up on the 10th of April, and I appreciate the folks that came out last night for the 101. Matt was on his game, and we even had music going on with that. So he's, he's got a theme going. And he's... And he's working on a sort of a similar presentation, I believe, for South Fork, and I think that would be very helpful as well. All right, Commissioners. You have something exciting coming up that you're going to be... I saw the thing on TV. That was pretty amazing.
Oh, yeah, another topic for...
I know, but I'm just telling you, it was very good. They did a great job.
Thank you.
Scott, anything?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. Michael?
Did everybody see the invitation or announcement for Representative Hartman's open house on Saturday?
This coming Saturday?
This coming Saturday, 10:30 to 12:00 in Milwaukee at the Save-A-Mark Center.
Yeah. I will be unable to attend. I will be attending the Ways and Joint Ways and Means Roadshow in Gresham because I like to punish myself with extra things.
You do know how to have fun.
I do. I'm telling you. I'm ready for fun. I'm rocking and rolling. Just so you know, what I'm planning on talking about is funding for transportation. I know that they're talking about HB 5006, and I looked at that. But I want to make sure that they are taking in consideration infrastructure, which was one of the topic headings. And then I also put "other" and I put "transportation." So I will be talking about the fact that, very briefly in my two to three minutes, that they need to come up with a funding option that does not include tolling, and I will be wearing my tolling, anti-tolling t-shirt because I think it's important for me to show up wearing that. So those are the two topics that I will bring up in my testimony if I should be called. So I don't know. Lots of people are going, and I know a lot of OEA people are going to be attending Oregon Education Association Talk About School funding. I do not want to talk about school funding. But yes, I do know how to have fun, Mike. You know, be in beautiful downtown Gresham somewhere. Anything? Okay. I don't have anything other than all of my big fun meetings are coming up next week, so I'll have something to report following that. So if there is no further business, I would say that if you're all in consensus, that we can adjourn. Correct? Okay, all right.